And it's great that we have a few citizens here who want to speak. And first on it, I have Andy. Andy Schenk. Good evening. Can't hear you.
I'm Andy Schenk with the Better Bus Coalition. I have a comment related to the proposed fare changes. Specifically, this isn't in the proposed fare changes that were released, and I was at the meeting on Wednesday last week. But what I would like to bring to the board's attention is a proposal to review the kid fares that Metro currently has, which currently there's a metro uses a height limit, which is 36 inches and under is free, and then 36 to 42 inches would be a half fare, and above 42 inches would be a full fare, which roughly puts two and under children free, three to five, half fare, and children above the age of five roughly paying full fare. And from what I've, one of the issues as a parent who rides with young children is that, one, it takes a long time just to pay the fares. So from an efficiency standpoint, it's cumbersome. There isn't an ability to buy the half fares within the app. So it's always a combination of app, cash, fare cards. And then, second, when I looked at similar sized metros within our region and around the United States, specifically, you know, 2 million, 3 million, 4 million sized metro areas. Cincinnati was, had the most, the highest fares for children. The average across all of these, when I looked at other metro areas and bus systems, was typically five and under was typically a free fare for children, and five to 12 was typically a half fare, with some exceptions and variations. But as you're looking at the proposed fares, I would like to ask the board to look at children's fares and potentially raising those height limits and raising the age limits for fares. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Really appreciate it. I appreciate your voice out in the community on this, too. A lot of the board has heard what you guys are saying. And in the committee, we were talking about it last week. And I think there was a lot of support. I won't speak for the whole board, but in terms of simplification, right, which I thought was one of your points, and, you know, making it accessible for anybody with, young people with them to ride. So thanks again for those points. I think it's heard, and I think staff is looking at it right now. Well, probably has been for the past week at least, if not several weeks. So thanks again. Really like the Better Bus Coalition. So appreciate it. All right. Renee Caven? Welcome.
Thank you. This is my first time ever speaking in public at a board. I do appreciate very much the opportunity to do so, that you have evening hours. And I'm also speaking on the fare increase, which is what it is. You call it a restructuring, but it is essentially an increase. Four and a half years ago or so is when the tax, sales tax increase went into effect that I voted for and my fellow friend, bus rider, voted for. My husband voted for it, too, but he doesn't ride the bus. And I, it's, I have to say, it's a little disappointing that the fares are being raised again so soon after the increase due to the tax levy that passed. Another feature of that is that tax, sales tax increases do negatively affect people of lower incomes, which is the majority of your ridership. I'm kind of making an assumption in that regard, but I have always ridden local routes, urban routes, the 33, the 20, and routes surrounding those, too. And people who can afford to drive typically do so. So I would hope that maybe part of this increase would go toward increasing your ridership of higher incomes. Just to give you a little story, my co-rider that I spoke of earlier, who also voted for the tax increase, she moved and she rides, she now rides the Metro Plus. And she loves it. It didn't, you know, she was disappointed in our routes being reduced, but she's still a rider. I'm still a rider. What I would wish for part of the tax increase to do would be to allow people to take public transit all the way to the Cincinnati Northern Kentucky Regional Airport to catch, say, a 6:30 or 7:00 a.m. flight. That would be awesome if you could arrange that. Otherwise, I just want to say I do appreciate very much the increased east-west routes that you've put into effect. I look very forward to taking the 61 to the Madeira Farmers Market next month. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
And thank you so much for speaking so well. We appreciate it. And Dr. Zem, how are you? Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Can you hear me? Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to speak to you. I'm here to speak about the partnership that the University of Cincinnati is having with GoMetro on a research project sponsored by FTA. This was a very competitive process, and we were very fortunate to have received and been awarded this project. And the project is about, or the title of the project is accelerating the adoption of advanced digital construction management systems. So in a nutshell, digital construction management systems basically are computer systems that integrate all the participants on a construction project. And as you know, there are a lot of entities involved on a construction project, from architects, the owner, example, Sorta, and the engineers, and the contractors, and the subcontractors. And managing a construction project, you always hear in the news about cost overruns and schedule overruns. And the reason they happen is because there are tons of communication and tons of information that are generated from the designs, through the bidding, through the construction, through the maintenance, and so forth. And in many cases, everybody's working in their own world, and the information is not communicated in a streamlined manner. And that's what advanced digital construction management system is trying to do. Basically, there are cloud-based systems, and the biggest advantage, are so many advantages, of course, we don't have time to talk about them, but maybe the biggest advantage is since they are cloud-based, all the participants have access 24-hour, 24-hour, seven days a week. And the biggest advantage is the single source of truth. When you access the cloud-based system, you will have access to the latest version. And this will reduce significantly the rework because the contractor won't be working off a different version of the drawing than the latest version that the design team has. So we have been very fortunate partnering with Khalid and Sorta to be awarded this project. Because just to give you an idea about how competitive the process is, this research project is a four-year, $5 million research project, which in academia, that's a lot of money. Maybe, you know, like, you know, on the transit part of things, it's not a lot of money, but for academia, it's a big amount of money. As part of the infrastructure bill, the Department of Transportation has actually allocated a lot of money for the studying the advanced digital construction management systems. The Department of Transportation, of course, you know, they always have a little bit more money than transit. And they had maybe $100 million, and they took this money, and they have divided up between different universities and different Department of Transportation, State Department of Transportation. For the Federal Transit Administration, they had $5 million for studying ADCMS. And guess what? They decided to give all of it to one entity, which is the University of Cincinnati and its partners, and the largest partner. So again, I don't want to take a lot of your time, but really, we couldn't have done this if it wasn't, as I mentioned, for Khalid, because he really introduced us to all the projects that you are currently doing, you know, with the Bus Rapid Transit and everything. And also, I want to thank all of you because we couldn't have done it if Sorta was not successful, because that's something we put in the proposal, you know, like the level of ridership that you maintained through COVID, and how Sorta is very well, you know, looked at from the administration. So I want to thank you for this, and I'm really looking forward for a very fruitful collaboration because at the end of the day, we will demonstrate these systems on the project that Sorta will be doing. And then we'll use this to basically develop an implementation guide for other transit authorities throughout the country to basically look at and use when they are also in the process of implementing ADCMS. So thank you so much for the time that you heard me, and also for, I'm looking forward to the partnership. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I think it's great to say that two amazing Cincinnati institutions are collaborating. It's at the success of both coming together to advance not just our system, but systems and transportation across the country. So thank you for your hard work on this, and we look forward for the next few years to the results. Khalid, good job, too. So, all right. Hearing and citizens, and then a chair update. I wanted to take a moment and note that today is Earth Day. I haven't seen as much press about it as usual, but it's an important day. And I want to thank everybody here, everybody in our system, everybody operating today, everybody maintaining vehicles, and everybody riding for doing something good for the earth. Public transit is good for the earth, and it's good for our communities. So thank you, noting that today. I also want to note, we have a new vice chair who's in DC right now. So I'm sorry she couldn't be here, Sarah Sheets. We had a meeting of the full board during committee last week so that we could vote her in after being nominated by the Governance Committee. She's Director of Strategic Initiatives at the Cincinnati Development Fund. She has 25 years of experience in working in development in this region, working with communities, advancing our communities, and really transforming them. And I think she's been great on the board, and I look forward to working with her, and I think she looks forward to working with all of you as we move forward. We have fare improvement and restructuring. I want to thank public comments on that today, and we'll continue to be looking at that as we move forward. I did say in committee last week, and I want to echo again, I'm very excited about how Metro's out in front of addressing a lot of these issues. Fare capping really is the one that captures my mind. So this is the notion that you could pay a daily fare, and then if you get up to having spent the monthly pass costs, then you have a monthly pass, right? And you don't pay anymore. And this is also connected to the simplification of riding. You don't have to worry about what type of pass you're going to get. You just go and ride, and then that system is going to take care of you. So I think the leadership here of the organization has been pushing that, and I think it's really good for our riders and our community. So thank you for doing that. There's also some awards. Is it on the app now? And I honestly, I haven't used them yet, but I can't wait to see what those awards are like. So there's other new and innovative things going on with fares as well. We have Metro Rapid Open Houses coming in May, the 14th, 15th, 16th, 17th, 21st. Please make sure that you go to those, if you can, and get comments, and then see what our community is saying. And I also, I don't know if Mike's here, but I want to note that we won the APTA 2025 Security Certificate of Merit Award, and it was awarded at the Para Mobility Conference a couple of weeks ago, and that is absolutely amazing. And I also, I think it follows after Dr. Zem's comments, I want to note that Khalid has a new title, and I think it recognizes his value and contribution and importance to this organization. What is that title, Khalid?
Deputy Innovation and Vision Officer.
And I think those are exactly the right words. Innovation and vision. Thank you for all you do. So there's also a lot of other great accomplishments. I won't go through all of them. I do want to note that I hear the Reds have a new pitcher, and he's going to be called up soon. And how was it? Do you want to share a little bit about your experience with the Reds?
I would just say everyone learned last Tuesday night that I am not an athlete.
But an amazing singer. So, thank you. We also had our vehicle at opening day. That was amazingly successful. And I do want to note, I think the Reds have been playing a lot better.
Yes, yes.
So take some credit for that.
I'm going to take some credit for that.
There you go. All right. So I think we have two sets of minutes to approve today. The board minutes for March 25th, 2025, and the special board meeting last week, April 15th, 2025. Do we need to do those separately? Okay. I'd like to move approval of the minutes in the agenda. Neil seconded. Sorry, Pete. Properly moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say left. Any abstentions? All right, the minutes are approved. We actually have another person missing. Chelsea was not able to be here. I spoke to her shortly before the meeting. She is taking a kid to visit some colleges, and they're somewhere in the Blue Ridge Mountains right now, and she wishes she could be here. We did have a good finance meeting. No action items, I think, for approval at the board level. But it is important to note some of the audit work that we talked about. And I want to first say there's a real growing capacity in the organization that we should acknowledge and appreciate for doing this internal audit work, and that will lead to improvement of processes, efficiencies, a better stewardship of the tax levy, and ultimately, a better, safer product for our riders. So Norman Boogie has been leading a lot of this work. I don't know if Norman's here, but good job wherever you are, Norman. He's probably out doing another audit right now. But the two biggest ones of note are the Bridgestown, Bridgestone, not town, Bridgestone Tire Audit. So we lease our tires from Bridgestone, and as part of that, they have contractual obligations. The biggest finding was that they weren't always measuring the tread depth on the tires as they are required to as part of the contract. We discussed this. It did not lead to any safety issues or concerns. We have processes, we have maintenance that would catch all of that, but it's still part of the requirement that they do that because we want to have a multi-layered approach to making sure that we have safe operations. So that's the biggest thing that came out of that, that we will be pushing for them to make sure they always do them as required, and then we will get the data back and verify those records. The one that I was, of course, really excited about, I'm excited about tires, but it was the ridership audit. Important work to make sure that we have the correct ridership numbers, and we're doing all the right things there. There was a finding that's important to note, that sometimes the APCs, the passenger counters on the buses, will have a need of maintenance. Something will go wrong with them, the numbers won't quite be right. And that's detected by the systems. And the step that wasn't always happening was saying, hey, go out and test this unit, make sure it's right, replace it, repair it. So we're going to have better processes moving forward, making sure that those APCs are correct. There's also a finding that's important. I mean, I admit, it's pretty common in the industry. So that's counting people who are getting on and off the bus that are not actually riders. Pretty common for drivers to get on and off several times at the end of routes, sometimes supervisors getting on and off. Or even passengers sometimes getting counted multiple times as they get on and off as they're loading something. So there's some work being done to make sure that we don't double count drivers, especially when they get off, so you can do things by the sensor on the seat to know that they've gotten up, and things like that. There are other techniques, so we'll be working on that. And I think there was discovery of an unauthorized possibility of access to the data from an employee, and that is being remediated right away. No apparent problem or anything, but just always making sure that you have your users accounted for in the right way. So those were the big audit findings. And again, I think it's a great, great process that we have going forward. And I think we have three more audits coming very soon. So come to the finance meetings. It's really interesting. So that is what I got from finance. We'll, of course, go over the financial numbers with our wall of numbers, and Mr. Walker here soon. So I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Drehouse.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Etheridge. Etheridge? I appreciate it. We had a great meeting. I'm planning an ops. Mr. Sproul led us through that, along with the executive staff. A lot of good news to report. You'll see that some of the reporting, reports that we're reviewing now are a little bit different than some of the reports reviewed over the past few quarters. So we're keeping current on the type of data and KPIs that we're measuring and reporting out to the board. There are six items that we put on the consent agenda. None for discussion, all for consent. But just to talk about a few of them. One specifically, the Queens Gate retaining wall design. It's also a concrete apron. It's a huge amount of concrete that was necessary, and we went and had a bit of discussion about that item. Secondly, the operator uniforms, of course, is a great sign that we're hiring more people, and we need more uniforms. So congratulations, Adrian, and the staff for continued growth in our personnel. The, recently, this morning apparently, we had a meeting about the breakout renovations, breakout, breakroom renovations. And that contract is in here. And also, just to look at the overall awards, you'll see that the MBE percentage spend is significant. And that's one of the KPIs that we like to keep track of pretty closely. And it wasn't as high as this in previous months, but the green number is a positive sign to see. So those are the items that are on the consent agenda. And do we have any, I'll turn it back over to you, or do we ask for approval? Okay. I put forth a motion to approve the consent agenda as proposed. Is there a second? Mr. Metz, seconds. Discussion? Okay. All those in favor, do we take a roll call vote here, Natalie? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Amott?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce? Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson? Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, so we're all approved, and that is a wrap for our committee. So, KZ? Not a concern, more of a positive outcome there. The green numbers are substantial in this round. Prior months, they weren't as substantial as they are this month. So there are quite a bit of MBE contracts. In particular, the Jostin one is a significant amount, as well as the retaining wall. No, I mean, we're not putting it out there as a requirement, but we're tracking it so we're aware of how we do on MBE spend. And we were doing that, I'm just going to answer on behalf of all of us, like, we were doing that long before the current administration and probably before the previous administration. So it's just a healthy thing for an organization like ours, public-facing or otherwise, to track. It's a value, it's important to us, and important to the community. But that's my comment on it, but I welcome any other feedback on it.
Was any other contractors, be it on the fare box outside of Jostin, any other minority contractors, anybody know?
I went there for the meeting last week. I know it's a little bit.
Was it any other contractors, be it on, MBE contractors outside of Jostin, that be it on that, this project here?
I would have to go back and look at the actual classification status of all the vendors that bid. We had three bids come in for the Jostin contract.
Kiker was one of them.
I'm sorry?
Kiker was one of the other two, Kiker Development.
We're happy to email it out to all of the board, so we'll get that out to you all.
It's in the, Natalie, the details of the action item there. Jostin Construction, Kiker Development, and John Cecil Construction was also.
All three of those are MBE contracts.
It all bid.
Thank you, John.
Okay, well, thanks for approving the consent agenda, and that's all for our committee report. Thank you.
Thank you. There was also a para-transit meeting last week. There's some exciting news there. Mr. Kelly, you want to take it away?
Yeah. First and foremost, I want to thank my colleague, Bree Moss, for running the first para-transit meeting of the year that I was not able to attend, as well as updating all of you guys at the next full board meeting. So thank you, Bree, for your assistance with that. But at the most recent para-transit meeting, we got some exciting updates. So one of the updates, we are working to integrate transportation between the three major counties north and south of us. Butler County, Hamilton County, and tank transportation for individuals with disabilities. So we've launched a couple of programs. One of them is a one-call platform. So you can make one phone call to one phone number, and you can schedule transportation between any two or three of the counties that you would like. And I see here that we received, correct me if I'm wrong, roughly 1,000 phone calls between January 20th and February 28th, which is exciting that people are starting to use our program. And we are also moving forward with our one-seat pilot program that is going to be launching on May 5th. And that will feature 40, is the plan, for 40 riders to experience what it's like to schedule transportation and utilize transportation to get as far north, looking at our map here, as far north as Miami University, and all the way down south to the airport. If you're a student at Miami and you need to go fly somewhere, you can take one trip, schedule one trip, and have a seamless transition. So that's a program that's going to be launching on May 5th, and we'll be tracking throughout our para-transit meetings how that is going, and report that out to you guys. The last update here, we talked a little bit about access. The numbers were pretty similar to, the numbers we received were pretty similar to the numbers that were reported out at our committee meetings. Comment that was made by Mr. Gibson that I thought was a smart one is to use our time and the subcommittee to dive into those numbers more and see what we can do to offer recommendations and improve stats as well. But it seems as if we are improving month over month with on-time performance and in terms of scheduled by pickup and drop-off. And in March, we were at trips scheduled by pickup, 92.7%, which is an increase of about 4% for the previous month. And trips scheduled by drop-off at 94.5%, which is also an increase of about 4.5% from the previous month. And those are the major updates.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
It's amazing news. I mean, this is. I mean, this has been years and years and years of work to get to the point of this pilot. Um, and somebody actually riding across multiple counties, districts, systems, um, state lines.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, to get to CVG or anywhere in Northern Kentucky or, um, get up to Miami University or, or that. So, uh, super excited about that. Is that, uh, two weeks away is the, the launch?
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, thank you for your work on that, Mr. Kelly and, uh, everybody at Sorta Metro and the other systems doing that work. So.
Darryl, you said this is the only one in the country?
This is the only one I know of in the country anywhere that does this.
That's incredible.
Yes. Thank you.
I also just want to add a, a word of appreciation for our partners at Tank and BCRTA. This is complicated and there are, there was a time in this community where all of our organizations didn't sit down at tables and work on tactical things like this to improve the outcomes for our riders. And so, um, while we are a big system, uh, they are important parts of the transit landscape and their willingness to get around the table and partner is, is really valuable.
Mr. Harris, who used to chair the, uh, the committee on this, also want to note his work, uh, to make that happen and pulling all the people together as, as Pete says. So, um, great. Can't, can't wait to learn more and see how it works out. Uh, all right. So financial results, Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Etheridge. Um, I'll go through these rather quick. And again, we went through it in detail last week during the finance committee. And, um, if anyone has any questions, just please stop me. And Mr. Etheridge, I will say, I know ridership is very exciting for you, but keep in mind, be the tires before you have the riders. Okay? Tires before riders is the motto.
Where the rubber hits the road.
That's right. So we'll, we'll go through the, the P and L summary here for the month. You can see our revenue came in at $14.3 million. That was slightly unfavorable to our budget by about $246,000. The primary driver for that was the reduction in our fare revenue from what we had budgeted, along with a slight reduction in the investment income from what we had budgeted as well. Going down to the expenses, uh, they came in at $13.7 million. Those, uh, moved the other way. They were favorable or we spent less than what we had anticipated to our budget. Uh, the main drivers for that were the, um, we had a change in, in our accounting for workers' comp and medical, uh, was one piece of it. And the other component was just the, the vacancy rate that we have for open physicians is a little bit higher than what we had budgeted. Uh, you net those two numbers together and it's a $600,000, $648,000 to be precise, operating capital contribution, which is favorable to our budget by about $540,000. So pretty, pretty happy with that. Uh, the next item, looking at our ridership, came in at $1,159 for the month. A little under our budget, but also, you know, not, you know, we had some, some tough travel days in January. But just to frame everyone here, it was still greater than it was last year. So, uh, you know, nice, nice effort for the entire organization here. Natalie, if we go to the next page? Um, here, here we have the details behind all these figures. And really, we can just focus in on the bottom line on the right. You can see year-to-date, we have an operating capital contribution of $436,000, which is $841,000 greater than what we had budgeted. So we're right now $1.3 million almost ahead of plan, which is, which is a phenomenal, um, phenomenal process here and a phenomenal achievement for the organization. And, you know, to frame this right now, we have been budgeting and booking our sales tax revenue to budget for the, for the year. So you can see there's no variance there. We'll start, um, you'll start seeing actuals next month. But.
I think you, you undercut by $400,000, uh, favorability.
It's 1.3 million. Yeah, we're 1.3 million favorable, 840, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Thank you. We're all, thank you.
Take more credit.
Got to like, take the numbers. Maybe I was focused on my next comment, but this is the third straight month that we've outperformed our budget. And really, the outperformance is coming in on the expense management side, which is something that we can control. Um, so for me, I'm, I'm proud of the entire organization for, for looking at that, looking for ways that we can provide the service and provide the community for what, what we, we want to provide them, but still be fiscally responsible with the taxpayer fund. So it's nice to see the third straight month outperforming our budget. And the final page we'll go through, Natalie, is, go to the next one. Is, you know, as, as we want to frame everyone here again, we have $156 million. Um, but a lot of that's, um, it is committed for in the future. Maybe not all for 2025, but for out-years. But we, we want to keep this top of mind for everyone, uh, that we have this money, but we do have commitments in the future. Um, and that's all I have this evening. Any, any questions for me? All right. Thank you, everyone.
I would like to, um, thank our chair for doing Metro on the Move for me today.
Go over it again, Andy. Where's the?
You just left one thing out. It's, May 12th through 16th is Bike to Work Week. And, um, we're partnering with, uh, Trastate Trails to sponsor Bike to Work Day, which will be Friday, May the 16th. And it will start with breakfast on the bridge from 7:00 to 9:00 AM on the Newport side of the Purple People Bridge. So on May the 16th, if you use a bike, you will have free ridership on Metro all day on May the 16th. Thank you.
My apologies. I want to note the, uh, the amazing alignment and, uh,
Yes.
that that shows. Uh, and then, uh, my apologies for missing the, uh, the bike, uh, point though. And I, I, I don't think I noted the Mystics and Jackie Robinson Day. Um, and I think it was really amazing that you got to do that. So, thank you so much.
I'd like to recommend that, uh, the two executives